It's your question.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
We live in very friendly.
Well.
Good evening, everybody. I'd like to welcome everyone to the December meeting of the Laconia zoning Board of Adjustments. Just a few things to cover. If you have a phone, please put it on silence so it doesn't interrupt. Also, I just want to remind everybody that there'll be points and times during each application that the public will be able to speak at the mic in an orderly fashion, and when they speak, they speak to the board and not to the audience. And please refrain from clapping and cheering or whatever other things that may or may not transpire. I'd appreciate that. And with that, can we call the roll?
Uh, Richard Bodie.
Yep.
Jane LaRoche.
Here.
Uh, Roland Mayhew.
Here.
Steve Bogart.
Here.
Mike Foot.
Here.
Marcia Hayward.
Here.
Uh, Planning Director Dean Treffethan.
Yep.
And Sheena Duncan, zoning technician.
Okay, so we have a quorum. Jane will be our voting member as she, uh, tonight for the, uh, entire agenda. Okay, so next on the agenda is gonna be the minutes from, uh, eleven twenty-one meet- meeting. Did the folks that were here get an opportunity to review?
They did.
Mm-hmm. Any, uh, changes, additions, corrections?
Only that my name has an E on the end of it.
I'm sorry, oh, fix that.
Well, they got it right in one place.
Yeah, I know, half-half.
That's a fussy, my God.
Just a footy away.
Yeah, well, you know, give 'em an inch.
Yes. So, uh, with that, if the, if there's no changes or anything, make a motion.
Make a motion to accept the minutes as corrected with an E on the end of foot.
Gotcha.
Can I second that?
With the motion, any, uh, discussion? There being none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. We have no extensions as we're moving right along, so we're gonna move to continued public hearings. Uh, we had one that was actually, it was carried over from the last meeting. Uh, we never opened it, so it actually wasn't continued, but that's okay. We can work with it there. And, uh, so we'll start off the bat with, uh, application two zero two-two dash zero zero eight-four. It's a variance, four eighty-five Endicott Street East, Unit seventeen. The applicant requests a variance from section two thirty-five dash seventy and section two thirty-five dash forty-one. If the applicant is here, please come forward and introduce yourself for the record and tell us how we may help.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Suzanne Brunel. I am an attorney on behalf of the applicants. I, um, am a shareholder at Divine Millman and Branch in Manchester, New Hampshire. Um, the applicants are both here today, Rachel and Sean Sprague, sitting right here. They purchased the subject property, which you just mentioned, which is four eighty-five Endicott Street East, Unit seventeen, which is part of the Gate House Colony at Laura Ann Village here in Laconia in August of twenty twenty-one, as a second home for their growing family. At the time of their purchase of the property, Rachel and Sean were advised that leasing of the property was allowed under the condominium documents, and they were provided with a copy of the renter and guest rules. And we have been advised that renting in that particular condominium has been ongoing for, um, more than thirty years. And the most recent amendments to the condominium documents that were recorded at the Registry of Deeds indicates the owners may lease the property without the consent of the condominium board so long as it's leased for a minimum of seven days. That's just sort of background for you, why we're here. Uh, so Rachel and Sean approached the planning board to begin the process of applying for a short-term lodging application, and they were advised that they would need a variance on the property, um, because it does not qualify as a seasonal dwelling as it's not shut down in the winter. Uh, however, the applicants are not allowed to occupy, occupy the property year-round because of this unique constraint of the condominium documents, um, that prohibit year-round living in the property. Um, so the applicants are unable to qualify for short-term lodging at all under the city's ordinances, although the property is located in the RS District. Our request today is simply to allow the applicants to be able to lease the property as other residential owners in the city are able, and it seems we're some sort of, it's a very strange gap here, um, position that doesn't allow leasing for them at all. They just are unable between the covenants with the, um, condo documents and the actual regulations for the city. I have to say, I haven't seen this one before, and I've been practicing for thirty years, so it was a little complicated. Um, so we are here before you on the application for a variance, um, from Article seven, Section two thirty-five, forty-one M, to address the unusual status of the subject property. So I have not been in front of Laconia before. Do you want me then to proceed through the five criteria?
Okay.
So I do, I did submit, um, information on the thirteenth, um, to sort of redirect what was previously submitted to address more of the legal, um, issues that you guys are used to, seeing. So, um, the first one is granting the variance would not be contrary to the public interest. Um, so we all know when you're determining whether a variance is contrary to the public interest, we're looking for something that changes or alters the essential character of the neighborhood. In the case at hand, the condominium rules specifically permit unit owners to lease their units without association approval for a minimum of seven days. However, the condominium rules prohibit year-round residential use and require seasonal use. Unfortunately, seasonal use is never defined in the condominium documents. They do not contain the May one to October thirty-one restriction that the ordinances have, and the applicant simply cannot, under condominium rules, use the present premises year-round. Um, but they can use the premises for segmented, segmented recreational periods at any time during the year. So granting the variance would allow the applicants to reasonably use and occasionally lease the premises at such various times through the years. The condo rules permit and the gate house uni- unit owners currently engage in recreational use of their units at various times throughout the year, just as the applicant seeks to do under the variance request. So granting the variance would not conflict with the basic zoning objectives of the ordinance because of the use of the premise remains as a single-family use rather than multi-family or commercial, and the essential character of the neighborhood remains the same, so therefore it is not going to change the status in any, um, in any way and does not unduly or in marked degree, um, fail to comply with the zoning ordinance. Number two, the spirit of the ordinance would be observed. Determining whether a variance observes the ordinance of, the spirit of the ordinance is similar to being contrary to the public interest. The use of short-term lodging is familiar and ongoing in surrounding neighborhoods as an existing and ongoing use in various other units. It does not in any way alter the essential character of the neighborhood. Further, granting the variance would have no negative effect, effect on the health, safety, or general welfare of the community. The variance would not excuse the applicants from adhering to the safety rules of the short-term lodging units outlined in your Article seven thirty-five forty-one M, which includes a satisfactory joint inspection by the fire department and the building code enforcement department in compliance with the general safety and welfare standards found within the ordinance. By the way, I've never seen that in another town. It's great. It's a safety gap to make sure that things are proceeding well within, um, the leasing. So granting the variance would allow for the applicants to use the property in a manner similar to the other units in the neighborhood while promoting tourism, tax revenue, and related benefits to the city of Laconia, while enhancing the health, safety, and general welfare of the community by virtue of the above-referenced inspection regime. Granting the variance would do substantial justice. So this is our, our weighing. In order to determine whether granting a variance would do substantial justice, the board must weigh the potential loss to the applicants versus, um, the potential gain in denying the variance. In the case at hand, the denial of the variance serves to prohibit the applicant from utilizing its property from time to time during non-summer months to generate income that will offset the cost of ownership. This serves no public benefit, as periodic rentals during non-summer months cause no harm or detriment to the public as discussed in Criteria one and two. Denial of the variance likely leads to the premises becoming economically unaffordable to the applicants. They are a young married couple expecting their first child, and yields the public no benefit, but only the detriment of a vacant property during the winter months. Instead of granting the variance, instead, granting the variance would have a beneficial effect on the public by promoting tourism and tax revenue for the city during off-season months, thereby precisely doing justice. Number four, the values of the surrounding properties would not be diminished. If the variance is granted, the value of the surrounding properties would not be diminished, as the requested variance does not negatively affect the surrounding neighborhood or the public benefit. As stated above, the variance would allow the applicants to expand the recreational use of the premises into the off-season. The unit is surrounded by forest and tucked away from other surrounding condominium units. These are single-family units. They are not connected to one another. And failure to allow short-term lodging may in fact reduce the value of the property and the surrounding properties by limiting the actual use of the premises. Number five, little enforcement of the variance would result in unnecessary hardship, the fifth and the big prong. The purpose of this is to show that, um, the special conditions of the property make it different than the other properties in the area, and that there's no fair and substantial relationship between the general public purpose of the ordinance at the provisions and the specific application, and that the use is a reasonable one. In the case at hand, denial of the variance would result in unnecessary hardship to the applicant because the premise is, is subject to the special conditions that distinguish it from other properties in the area. As mentioned, the condominium rules prohibit year-round residential use of the premises, leading to the city's interpretation that the premises is not a single-family residence, but instead a seasonal dwelling unit. As a seasonal dwelling unit, there is no possibility for short-term rental without the variance being sought. The fact that the ordinance uniquely applies to the premises only because of the condominium rules require seasonal use creates a hardship relatively, relatively unique to the premises. Further, the ordinance's general public purpose of regulating short-term lodging is to preserve the quality and quantity of housing stock for year-round residential use. In this unique case, the ordinance inaccurately presumes that periodic residential use is an accessory use on the property. However, under the condo rules, periodic recreational use is the only allowed use on the property. As such, the resulting application of this ordinance provision to the premises has no fair and substantial relationship to the public purpose set forth. Another general public purpose of the ordinance regulation of short-term lodging is to preserve the traditional character of residential neighborhoods that can be negatively impacted by short-term lodging. Almost all gatehouse condominiums are recreational, as recreation is part of the traditional character of the neighborhood. There's no fair and substantial nexus between the denial of the variance and the stated purpose of preserving traditional character. The character of the neighborhood remains fully intact when the variance is granted. The proposed use is a reasonable one. The applicant's proposed use is simply the ability to rent the premises periodically during non-summer months in addition to summer months to defray the cost of ownership on the property that might otherwise sit idle and vacant. The use is one that occurs in many places throughout the city of Laconia and the Lakes Region without harm or negative consequences, and is such as a reasonable use. Therefore, little enforcement of the ordinance applied to this unique characteristics of the premises creates an unnecessary hardship. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Do we have any questions?
Are there any questions of the applicant at this time?
Not at this time.
Not at this time? Okay. What I'd like to do is go ahead. You may sit for a few minutes, depending on how many people wish to speak.
Okay.
It might be a few minutes longer.
Thank you.
Or it could be less. So with that, I'd like to open it up to the public and ask if anybody from the public wishes to speak for or against this application. Please come forward at this time. Introduce yourself to the re- for the record.
Good evening. My name's Ken Levy. I'm the current board, uh, the president of the association of Gate House Colony.
Good evening.
Good evening. I've been on since, uh, I've owned since thirteen, two thousand thirteen, and I've been the president since the summer. I was secretary from fourteen on. I've got a lot of work to do right here. I've got a lot of work to do. First, I have a question I need to have answered, um, before I move forward, going through two different files I have in front of me. I noticed on the website that a, there's a filing deadline, and I'm just curious of how, how this came about. I know I talked to Sheena earlier. Uh, I don't have any clarification, but there's a deadline of November eighteenth for all paperwork to be submitted and any kind of changes. Here it is here. I know, not to embarrass anybody, but in accordance with the rules and regulations of zoning board, uh, and then bold, all completed application forms, plans, and fees must be, must be submitted no later than the filing deadline shown below. Back to regular caps. Items not complete or filed after the deadline will be deferred to the next scheduled meeting. Now, we already got deferred to this date from the twenty-first of November.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, two holiday weeks. With that, the deadline is the eighteenth, and this is December nineteenth. The lawyer there forwarded this over to December thirteenth. And I've asked if this is acceptable, and Sheena's like, Sheena said, oh, maybe there's subtle changes here and there. I go, nope. First line, this correspondence is submitted to replace the criteria analysis portion of the variance application in its entirety. So this isn't an addendum. It's listed as an addendum, and the denim adds on to a motion or something like that. This isn't a complete change of every question. This is not an addendum, in my opinion, actually, in many opinions. So I didn't know how, so do I go forward with this one, or do I go back to the other one? I've got a lot of questions. I got a lot of answers to all the questions.
We're gonna base everything off the current one. What we look at it as is additional information and clarification has been provided.
Okay.
In order for the whole board to have all the pros- the, uh,
So it's being-
current information available so that the board can make the best decision available without, uh, undue timely movements or-
Sure. So it's being allowed?
Yes.
Okay. So on that, um, let me just start off by, with both these applications. I've been in the property since thirteen. I'm almost a thirty-year paramedic and a firefighter in Natick, Massachusetts. When I write patient reports, I have to describe what you're looking at so the doctor can see or a lawyer can see in a courthouse, what I did on scene. So I've gotta paint a picture. So I'm currently gonna paint a picture for you to see where there is gross inaccuracies in both of these forms. So stating back, I'll jump back to the original one, because they're both in the agenda from the Spragues.
And you may-
We don't, yeah, we don't have May one through the thirty-first on our documents. These were created in eighty-two. That number came up when the ordinance was set in two thousand nineteen, short-term renters. So we don't have that. Uh, they're, they want to rent during the months outside these dates, so they're already looking for a special exception, but that would get them these two dates. Now they're looking for more. So we're talking about rentals. We're not talking about full-time residents or any of that.
Mm-hmm.
They purchased the, uh, property back in twenty twenty-two. They were handed rentals rules, and yes, we did augment them. They were, they came to me. I took two old forms, made new rules, handed them back to the association. They made me changes. I made the changes. They were locked in. Just until one minute. They're not a bylaw. They're guidelines. She has highlighted here, each unit shall be occupied for private seasonal recreation by the owner. Yes, it, it does say seasonal, but we've been there since eighty-three, eighty-three, eighty-four? Started building the new houses in eighty-four. There is no limitation to people using their place year-round. We all ski. We all snowboard. We all snowmobile, all that kind of stuff. Most of us do. Then she has in here, the owner, oh, add in here, I highlighted, owner has, uh, as herein after provided and not for any business or commercial use whatsoever. We're looking at this as the Airbnb. That's in our bylaws. You cannot use the place as a business. We're looking at it as a business. It's an income generating property, in our opinion. It is a seasonal, family-oriented place. It's been in place for forty-plus years or forty, forty years. This is becoming a situation where it's an income-based property, and it's, it doesn't fit the community. It's detrimental. In particular, when you rent out your property, which you have permission, seven days minimum, someone had the mindset to do that back in eighty-three, seven days minimum. In particular, no use shall be made of any unit which become an annoyance or a nuisance to other unit owners. I will dive into that later. It's becoming a nuisance, and it's a problem for multiple. If I could have everyone stand up here, you'd see how many people are, are against this. It's, it's becoming a problem. And we've spoken in the past, and I've asked them to tone it down, and we've made some changes. It, nothing's slowed down. So I had to put a cease and desist on renting till this gets rectified. They put up here, and I highlighted seven-day period. It's not being adhered to. Renting out the residence at number seventeen is a residential root use. This is from the Tax Compliance Officer, Don Munson, and it's a cornerstone of homeowners, homeowners' property rights. That kind of gets diminished in an HOA, which we have. We're an association. We all vote, and we all meet. This is not like, you know, fifteen Pond Street in the middle of regular homes. She comes down, and number two of the variances granted in the spirits, we take renting our property very serious, which we spent roughly fifty thousand of our own money, our own cash to renovate and create an exceptional, exceptional spirits. I'll get back to that one. She goes back to say it can be used, uh, leased for seven days. We've had multiple violations. We've had a problem with it. Two of them have been fined. They've all been addressed way late. It's been, it's been a problem. If there were any violations by any guests, renters would be, we, we'd work to rectify the situation immediately. That is not true. We've had, I guess, follow the renters' rules, which were required by the, the condo association. So far, there have only been two complaints. There's been multiple complaints, only two violations that we've fined them for. One was on Bike Week and something else. Well, I'll get back to that one. She also lists the Senate Bill two forty-nine. That was her hopes during the summer that this is gonna carry through. That died seventeen zero, November seventeenth, I think it was, in the Senate. They didn't even discuss it. They pushed it aside. That was gonna take the power away from you guys of limiting these, uh, short-term rentals. She's, uh, at the bottom of that paragraph, times have surely changed, but it's been a better for the, uh, but it has been for the better because now both guests and owners can select a guest that has a positive history of being respectful, a respectful guest. That hasn't been happening for us. I don't care what kind of five-star system you're using. It's not working, and not everyone's horrendous, but they're just not listening, and it's just becoming a nuisance for us. She states back, the lawyer touched on it.
I, I-
Sure.
Asked a point of clarification.
Absolutely.
Is, are you indicating that it's been used as a short-term rental?
Nope.
Outside of the seven days, or it's been used as a seven-day rental?
The current owners are using it as a rental property far less than seven days a period.
Okay.
Far less.
Okay.
Okay. And to rebuttal what the lawyer had said, there is no short-term history at that residence. And I know Mr. Treffethan can respond to this. I was asked if I was lying to the Spragues when I told them, no, Jim lived there for sixteen-plus years. There is no short-term history. You just bought it in twenty-one. He lived there until he got kicked out. So there's no history there. And then Dean remembers, I'm saying, I said, well, I got accused of lying, and he said, that's kind of funny, because they already told me there's been no history of short-term. So there was a game being played. Got that settled. They're asking for forgiveness on everything, and they're still asking for more. So they, they're asking for, to, to, to rent in between May first and the thirty-first, and then some. It's been told to you here that nobody can live there off-season or not during the seasonal periods. That is not true. They can occupy their place every day, every weekend, whenever they want. They choose not to use it during the summer to gain as much money as possible to rent it out, and the renters are becoming a problem over and over and over again. They go back to this prior rating, that's, they go by these rating systems. That's not working out for us. Uh, my husband and I bought this property with the mutual understanding that we could rent it up for seven days, as most others have been doing for seven, uh, forty years. That is not true. We had a couple of owners, ones since long sold, well, not long sold, a few years ago. They rented out a week, maybe two weeks a year. This is no lie. To the same families, so we had this family, that family, this family, that family, over the years. People got to know them. That's it. That's all the renting that was done. Then we had some full-term renters, like three sixty-five. Those are the full-term renters. There is, there is no strong history of renting. Only two families did it a couple of times a year. And it says that, they also bought a home in Natick, a new mixed-use residence in Natick in three twenty-two. So he can run out, they, they renovated, so my husband ran his physical therapy business out of it. There were a lot of renovation costs and other unexpected associated, um, inflationary pressures and commodity swings. We love New Hampshire. However, the current price, short-term rental is the only way that we can make ends meet and keep the property. I know others in the community feel the same way. The corner board consists of five owners that might, five owners who may have different opinions on it, but the fact is, the overall majority continues to support short-term rentals. Nope. You saw the numbers here, it's November. There's greater numbers now. There's a couple letters of support. That is in, that is not correct. The property, I don't know what's going on here. I, I feel kind of personal in this one. The property was bought in eight sixteen twenty-one for two hundred and seventy thousand, two hundred and seventy-two. And then they put fifty thousand into it, documented in here. They put just about fifty K into it. So now we're talking, you know, the numbers. So that's a price. First home. They get the vacation home. Second home is in Natick. They bought a disrenovated home in Natick for nine hundred and seventy, for six months later, exactly six months later, for nine hundred and seventy-five thousand, and renovated that. But they feel like they need to rent out Gate House in order to keep it, because they can't afford it if they don't. I think you might have to let that go or move on to a place that will allow you to rent out a property. Not a Gate House. It doesn't fit our neighborhood. It's just, it's yin and yang. It's oil and water. So I have a problem with that one also. That's what the fifty K comes in. I was telling you earlier. When you come down to the responses of, uh, the proposed use is a reasonable one because it has a strong rental history. No, it doesn't. No full-time resident is supposed to reside there with the above-referenced exceptions. There's two people, but we have a few people who live there. That's their only home. I'm not moving them out. We are not moving them out. That'd be a true hardship. Uh, other condominium, uh, there's been a strong history. That's not true. Other condominium owners also participate in short-term rentals. Not right now. We shut that down. There were Airbnb. All three that rent are Airbnb. We put a stop to it. Nobody's renting right now. Nobody's supposed to be renting, but we can't police that. We have demonstrated exceptional communication skills with all parties, butters, renters, boards, et cetera, and have rectified any issues that have come up. Not true. That is not true. It's been, it's been tough. I talked to them personally for my home in Natick, asked them to do things, stop renting. How do we fix this? Stop renting. Stop renting. And they didn't stop renting. They just made it worse. I'm like, I, I don't tell you. You're, you're just shooting yourself in the foot. There's come, there's other issues that come up. The, so they had, uh, renters come up and, uh, talk about not listening to us. That's their home. That's Kevin's home. A tent was erected, and in our bylaws, or in our renters' rules, there's no tents, no tents. So they were asked to take that tent down, the renters. Well, they didn't. They popped the second one up hours later. What, what are you doing? But they were told, they were told by the owners to put it, take it down. It never happened. It never happened. Um, in our, in our, in our rental rules, we have everything here. No more than ten persons per day. That's one of their fines. They had about thirty people over there. Three houses were rented by the same family. They occupied this house at once next to Kevin. Can't be happening. That's the second fine. The other ones, they, in here, they say they conceded to not renting during Bike Week. That is not true. We, at that meeting, it was unanimous vote to not rent during Bike Week, because two of the Airbnbs had a massive problem with the bikers, which trickled onto us. Again, Kevin, the renters next to him wouldn't move a trailer. They said, we're here till Sunday. Deal with it. You won't have to deal with us again till next year. Well, that's not gonna happen again. Uh, blocking his staircase and not moving the trailer. We have down here, just for our insurance purposes, swimming, there's no lifeguard at the pond. Swim at your own risk. Renters can have inflatables only at the, at the beach or the, the lake, a little small lakefront, it's like a hundred and seventy-five feet, but it's only like thirty feet usable, and they're asked to take their inflatables back. No kayaks. But I got, I got a, uh, an email, not an email, a printout of one of her responses on her website saying, oh, thanks, Rachel. The kayaks were great. There was a great alternate for transportation on around the lake. They're just not listening. I don't know why. They, they do have the rentals' rules on their website. They are, I'm, I'm guessing they're printed on her refrigerator, but they're not being adhered to. I got other neighbors here that wanna talk, speak about that, but in short, they're just, they're just not, they're just not listening. And if you want to jump over to, I mean, I could keep going. I hope I don't need to, but, uh- the stuff the lawyer was saying. I think it came in too late, but it's allowed, we'll go past that one. Due to the recent volatility and uncertainty of the condominium, they seek to periodically rent the premises which they are not occupying in order to mitigate the financial burden of owning premises. We've got people that, this is, this is their only property. We've got people, the blue collar workers, they, they, I got one guy, he cost, but he's not here tonight, he wrote a letter. He got a two hundred, two hundred thousand dollar estimate to, to increase his size, he can't do it. His place sits empty right now, his sons are in sports, they just, sports, 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 but it sits empty. He doesn't rent it out, he just doesn't want to rent it out. But it costs him every month too, it costs me, mine's empty right now, it costs me every month. That can be a problem. Down in the second, they grant the variance would not be contrary. The last line, courts must also consider whether the proposed would be, would alter the essential character of the neighborhood. The character being nature, personality, temper, disposition, they all fit, it, it disrupts the way things are. I'm going to let these other guys talk, if they want to talk, it's, it's becoming a problem and it's, it's, it's got to stop. Granting the variance would allow the applicants to reasonably use and occasionally lease the premise at such various times. That's basically the whole summer, is what they're looking for. It's not, it kind of sneaks around there, but it's the summer they're going to gain the most bang for their buck. And they disguise it as tourism and tax revenue for the, the city of Laconia. Well, we're all up there doing the same thing. I know Michael Lind of the Eat Out every day at the diner in Laconia, they're making money, they're making money here. We go shopping, we all go to the gift stores, we all stop at the Maswell here and there, we all do our share. But we don't want to pin it on three houses to come up with the income for the rest of the city. The, yeah, they say at least occasionally. The third, the second one, as stated above, the short-term lodging is familiar with ongoing surrounding neighborhood and existing and ongoing use in various other units, and it does not anyway alter the essential, uh, essential character. That is untrue. That is untrue, it does alter it and there's only two others that try to and we shut them down because they don't have permits. They were being rented out illegally, basically, for the new statute. If you want to go down, and I had this, I don't know if it was Dino I was talking to, but I did call. Me being a fireman, I have a problem with this too, but this is beyond me. She likes to point that they do inspections and they check the home out. Well, if you're going to call this seasonal, this is a small home, it's under, it's under six hundred and eighty-six square feet. It's six hundred and eighty square feet, it's under fourteen. But these are all casement windows, you can't get out of them, they're not fire safety. So if you want to invite, if you want to make money off people staying at your property, I'd make it more fire safe. I'd have double hungs that are egress safe. Those cookie cutter houses all on that side have one exit. It's past the kitchen. Kitchen's firing on fire, you ain't getting all those bedroom windows. You better put a sledgehammer to knock out that middle post. That's my bread and butter, I do it every day. So I would like to see the fire department say, no way, there's only one egress, these windows have to be changed, that's out of my hands. All they want is a fire extinguisher, extinguisher and smokes, which, which is wonderful, everyone should have that. I think they're all hard white anyways. So that's one thing we do agree on. In the case at hand, denial of the variance serves to prohibit the applicant from utilizing its property from time to time during non-summer months. That is not true. To generate income that will offset the ownership. Yeah, that's true, because she wants to rent. We don't want the renters. You can use it all you want, twenty-four-seven, but we don't want the renters because they just don't listen and they're disrupting our neighborhood. Denial of the variance, like she said, likely leads to the premises from being economically unaffordable to the applicants? I don't know what to tell you. I just rambled off the money that they have, that they spent on these recent purchases. Why they want to rent this out on the backs of the good citizens of Gate House Colony is beyond me, so. There's, there's, there's a few other things that have been reiterated, I, I don't know what this one, another inaccuracy. The condominium unit, unit, not a complex, the condominium unit is secluded and not attached to any surrounding condominium units. That is true. It is surrounded by forest. No, it's not. And tucked away from other surrounding condominium units. I showed you the picture, it's twenty feet from Kevin's and it's twenty feet from Bob's. There's no forest around our structure. And that's called the unit. I mean, it, it just doesn't fit. That's not surrounded by forest. The fact that the ordinance uniquely applies to the premises only because the condo rules require seasonal, creates a hardship relatively, relatively unique to the premises. We didn't really deem it seasonal, it's just seasonal use is what we can do, but I think Dean mentioned to me that you guys are considered seasonal in our opinion. That's what got this whole thing going. And that's what happened this summer, we asked them, well, we had an owner come up and say, can we shut down renting? Discussion came up, that's when the Senate Bill two forty-nine came up. And then more discussion, and I was tasked as the new president to look into this, we did look into it. And what happened was, when I looked into it, we found out through the planning board that there's supposed to be a permit. That's what got this whole thing going. And we set a deadline of September fourteenth, the deadline wasn't met. The paperwork was given to the Spriggs and they didn't, they didn't accept it. Emails were sent, emails were sent, and I talked to Sheena and I talked to Dean. They were satisfied with what I sent, so the stuff was already sent in, and then finally, we got down to this date, and the date got pushed forward. So that's basically on that one. So what we have is, we're looking for a denial of this variance. We are not denying that the owners can occupy this property, three sixty-five, the owners. We are looking to control the, to control this renting problem we have, and it's, it's, it's a real problem. So there is no denial that they can stay in their property, three sixty-five, anytime they're in the winter months. We're looking to not let renters destroy the quality, the, the nature and the history of Gate House Colony, because that's exactly what's coming down the road. And if you go back to where this all started, this isn't, we're not forty-year humbugs. I have the dates, where did I put the dates? The Spriggs bought theirs in twenty-one, I have it in my notes. So the three Airbnbs, I've been there since thirteen, Kevin's since twelve, I believe, and people behind us. Number seventeen, who was applying for this variance, bought their property, eight sixteen twenty-one. The second Airbnb was six twenty-one twenty-one. The third Airbnb was nine fifteen twenty. This is incipient, this is not a longstanding forty-year rental history. This Airbnb is choking us out, we're not happy with it and we're trying to correct it. We're looking for your dismissal of the variance and, so we can get back to how Gate House usually runs. Peace and quiet.
One small question, what was that Senate Bill?
Senate Bill two forty-nine. It was the ordinance to limit you from limiting short-term rentals, and it died miserably, seventeen nothing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else from the public wish to speak for or against this application, please come forward at this time. Please come forward, introduce yourself for the record.
Good evening. My name is Bob Morse, my family and I have been owners of Gate House Condominiums, Unit sixteen, for the last twenty-six years. My wife and I retired a few years ago and we lived there full-time during the summer and the fall. Unit seventeen, which is right next door to us, approximately twenty feet away, is currently owned by the Spriggs. Previously had a long-term renter in there for eighteen years, living there until the unit was sold in twenty twenty-one. After they purchased the unit, we started seeing a lot of different people in and out. We then found out it was turned into a full-time Airbnb rental. There were no permits from the city ever taken. Once the warmer weather came in, that's when the problems really began. People were parking wherever they wanted, it's very small, it's very tight, like I said, it's twenty feet. I'd go out and ask them, hey, can you park in your spot, can you move your trailer? They'd just ignore me. Were excessive numbers of guests on numerous times, generally taking advantage of the association. We had large groups, one weekend in particular, there were large groups of people, they were right under my bedroom window, five feet away, till three o'clock in the morning, drinking and doing drugs. It's from me to you, right there, closer, yeah. When those renters found out that I called the owners and complained, they found out the next day. I was taunted by them for the whole rest of the week. They were there on vacation, so every time I'd walk in, walk into my driveway, they were taunting me. And this went on the rest of the week. I never complained again after that. I saw the, the Spriggs personally at our annual meeting and there was no communication about rentals or problems or anything, and there had been problems, but I was never asked, so there was no communication at all. I think, you know, Airbnb rentals are good in a certain situation, this just isn't one of them. You know, the units are very close together. You know, we don't even have a management company, so who do we got when there's an infraction? You know, we're going to be calling the board every time there's infractions, I don't think that's fair to them. You know, they're running, they'd be running a, you know, it's a full-time business. No matter how hard the host tries of an Airbnb, people are on vacation. A lot of them just want to be doing what they want to do and they don't always listen to the rules. The owners like myself, the, the ones that are living there during the summer, you know, we're the ones that pay the price. The investors, you know, they're, they're not around and they'll deal with it when they can get to it. When I bought my house twenty-six years ago, I bought into a residential neighborhood. You know, I could enjoy the lake with my family. I didn't buy into a motel atmosphere. I bought into a family community, which it's been, where we raised our children, and I don't think anybody should be able to come into a neighborhood and just flip it upside down, like is what's happened. I was able to read the applicant's statements that their attorney provided. They talk about hardship. What about my hardship? I'm living next door to a motel. I don't have the million-dollar house in the Boston suburbs that I can go back to, that's my home during the summer. I think you're going to hear from a lot of the abudders that are here this evening that have the same concerns I do. You know, I don't want to be faced with having to move after twenty-six years of being in the same house, but, you know, I might be left with no choice if this is able to go through. So hopefully you understand our consideration and act accordingly. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public wish to speak for or against this application, please come forward and introduce yourself for the record.
Good evening, my name is Chuck Daly. My wife Denise and I have been owners of Gate House Colony Number twenty since nineteen eighty-seven. In those thirty-five years, we've always contributed to better our association by lending a hand wherever needed and always welcoming new owners to our association, which I refer to as our hidden gem, because of its location and community feel. We've made lifelong friends at Gate House, we've been on vacation, been at family events, weddings, and spent a lot of time relaxing and hanging out with our neighbors. Our kids have grown up together, our homes are in close proximity to each other, that could very easily create problems among owners. Instead, we are courteous and flexible. In our thirty-five years of owning, the most problematic issue has always been renters. It takes up a good portion of our discussions at our annual meetings and general discussions with our neighbors. Although renting is allowed with restrictions, it has been abused and difficult to police. With the emergence of the Airbnb tidal wave, the last few years, it, it has become a business for many. Greed has replaced pride for some owners of our association. In fact, it's the last four purchases of Gate House that have been listing on Airbnb. This get-rich-quick scheme is a recent trend we do not welcome. Because of the overpopulation of common areas, that commercializing and the profiting from our longstanding private community, we have friends on eastern shores in Laconia, they have also been negatively affected by the recent Airbnb wave. They voted by majority as an association to ban rental of their homes entirely, to put an end to it. While raising our family, there were many times when money was tight, we could have rented. It's outside as to make bill paying a little easier. But we decided against it because we cared more about our community and property than we did about our bank account. To think it's okay that neighbors are policing and enforcing rules a few feet away to different renters weekly, while the owners of the property are a hundred miles away, is a selfish and blind ideology. To us, this is not the price of doing business. My wife and I oppose any short-term Airbnb permit for Unit seventeen or any house in our association because of the impact on our neighbors and our private property. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kevin Murphy, Unit eighteen, direct abutter to them, thank you. As was mentioned before, there's roughly twenty feet between our units. I have young kids. I'm against the renting just for a number of reasons. You know, the fact that, you know, we have ten feet of limited common area around our units, that's ours. Every time, almost every renter that came in the summer, and it was every single week, was infracting, sitting on my chairs, taking my chairs and putting it into their fire, like by their fire pit. We're out playing cornhole and there's, there's people and they're opening the blinds and staring out at us. Just a sense of like, you're just not comfortable, this is, everyone here, we're all friends. There's sixteen of us, twenty, twenty-one of us that are here that, or wrote in a letter that doesn't want this. It's just not, I've had to call them numerous times to say, you know, there's somebody blocking my walkway. Nothing happened. I said, there's somebody with a tent outside, there's people camped, they're sitting on my barbecue. Every issue was dealt with, if anything, the next day. Well, you know, you're up for Bike Week or something, that's Father's Day weekend, you don't have them just one weekend, you get the blessing to have them two weekends, so that's two weekends of my summer, if you have a bad renter, that I have to deal with them. And it's just, it's not fair, it's, it's not the way things are. Every other person there is using it to raise their family, all of our friend, all of us are friends, we all have our kids there. They get to, they roam around the neighborhood and it's just, it's just great. And then you have random people that you don't know, you know, that have, you know, some, some people that they rented to didn't have any reviews whatsoever. They could be pedophiles, they could be whatever, I have my eight-year-old daughter out there fishing, you know, we can look away for a minute, but now, like, you feel like you don't know who's beside you. And it's, you know, like I said, we've had, you know, they've had issues with a renter where they had bees in their stairs. I don't get a, Kevin, is it okay if they use your stairs? I get a text saying, we're letting them use your stairs because they're unwilling to use our stairs because there's bees and they've been stung by them. So I'm the one that has to have them go five feet by my bedroom window so that they can get access to their unit. It's just, it's not fair and I'm fully against it.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else from the public wish to speak for or against this application?
Hi, I'm Nancy Souza, I occupy Unit Number Twelve at Gate House Colony. I am one of the Airbnbs. I bought last summer, June eighteenth, and substantially rehabbed the property, increased property values surrounding my condo to the, to my own, my own liking. I think I enhanced the property externally as well as internally, so that everybody could appreciate. I just happen to have the house that enters into the development, so it's the first one you see. I think it's a huge improvement and I had been told by many people in Gate House what a great job I had done. So I just want to say, I'm there as an owner, but I also do Airbnb it. My stats are different than the variance that is up against currently that's being applied for. I have, I wasn't, I didn't, wasn't forced to shut it down. When I found out there was a compliance issue with the town, I willingly took it off Airbnb. It wasn't a forced thing, I wasn't trying to go out and do something that was against the, the town ordinance once it came to light. So it was not a forced issue from my, my standpoint. The other thing is, is that in the course of the year, that when I did rent, I rented a total of twenty-seven nights and I shut it off willingly. It was, actually, I had shut it off before, but right around the same time the ordinance came out. Because I had done what I wanted to do to meet my needs as far as maintaining the house, because I love it there and I want to use it, but I do realize that there's a cost of owning it. I'm not looking to make it a full-time business or anything like that, and I think your ordinance actually speaks to that, that it allows for a maximum of fifteen different people coming, different sets of people coming through your Airbnb or up to a maximum of a hundred and twenty days, whichever one is met first, and then you're done. Which I think from a community standpoint speaks volumes as to the intent of what the ordinance is actually supposed to do. Give the owners a little bit of flexibility, understanding that there is a market for this and people do need sources of revenue to help offset taxes and things like that. Twenty-seven nights with seven, seven or eight different groups coming through is not a significant burden. I have never had one complaint from anybody. I have never had one complaint from anybody in the association. A lot of times I heard, we didn't even know you had renters there. So I'm not sure if the, the, the position of the community as far as what's going on at unit seven is actually representative of the other Airbnbs that are in there. Because I know the other person has only rented a number of, a handful of nights. So I think, I think to say, and just to, to throw it as an Airbnb thing is kind of a little misleading. Maybe they have a problem with unit seventeen, I'm not sure. Again, my house is not situated like hers. I am the top one in the, in the development. I only have one abutter, like, next to me who's twenty feet off my side wall. Nobody on the other side, nobody in front of me, nobody in back of me. So it might be a better situation because I'm not, not so close to, to neighbors. And I think, I think also the spirit is, is that, you know, this is New Hampshire. It's live free or die, right? And what I do choose to have go on in my own four walls, as long as it's not affecting the community, that's really, I'm entitled to do that within reason. I do not advertise any of the community properties. I don't advertise that there's a community beach. I send them down to Where's Beach. Because I do not want my renters to impose on other peoples, other people in the neighborhood, their, their, their setting. That, that's not my, my thing. So I think, from looking at it from a standpoint of whether or not variances should be granted, I think that should be kept into consideration, especially that the ordinance is for May through October. I will say, having renters there in the wintertime, I came up on Saturday. I think I was the only one in the neighborhood, short of people that might live there year-round, which is against the bylaws currently. So it might be advantageous for the community to actually allow renters in the wintertime because personally, I would much rather rent in the off-season when there's nobody around, there's not any issues. They're in my house, they go, go do whatever they wanna go, go skiing or whatever. And then the summertime, I wanna be here because I love the lake, you know, so. But I understand your town ordinance is for May first through October thirty-first, and I think that's what we have to deal with first and foremost. Going outside that is the next step on. But I do think there's some benefit to people like myself that wanna use this in the summertime. And hey, if I could rent it, you know, February ninth, when nobody's here, it might be better for everybody.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anybody else wish to speak?
Hi.
Hello.
My name is Donna. My husband Al Perseo. We are owners of number nineteen, Gatehouse Colony. It's my thirty-fifth year of seasonal residency. My parents owned the home prior to us buying it out. We're located two doors away from the applicants. Gatehouse Colony has nineteen small individual cottages and two houses at the entrance. The cottages are very close together with limited common area between the cottages. It's not a resort, it's not a timeshare. Gatehouse has common area amenities for owners. We're a developed community with private covenants, conditions, and restrictions that prohibit running a business, in short-term vacation rentals. There are quiet hours, noise restrictions, parking, pet, tent, trailer restrictions. There are common area restrictions in that if a change is wanted, such as trees being cut or the color of your home, it must be done in writing, submitted to the board for approval. There are also renter restrictions for personal watercraft on our private property. The applicants, as well as two or maybe three other owners, new owners, ignored the bylaws when they've run a business out of unit seventeen as a rental property. They constructed an eight-to-ten diameter, approximate diameter fire pit with permit, permanent stone patio surround last fall after their purchase on common area. They ignored the bylaws. They have infringed on other owners by causing continued private nuisance to all surrounding owners. Their renters are interfering with the enjoyment of our land and homes, causing parking and restrictive bottlenecks to our very narrow roads in limited parking. Excessive and rotating people and groups, noise and stress on us and to the family dogs. These renters are generally making us feel unsafe with constant turnovers, transient people, renter threats and mocking at our owners when Gatehouse rules are broken. They are willing to continue to violate our bylaws as they announced during our annual meeting in June of this year that they would gladly accept fines in lieu of following the rules. This is their first year of ownership, and they haven't respected Gatehouse bylaws and the community. Short-term rentals are a lucrative business for the hosts, but a nightmare for the neighbors, the neighborhoods, private communities like Gatehouse Colony. The marketing of this property is infringing on the amenities of our private property owners. Our resources are strained, used, and promoted online, and they have the financial gain while it costs me, us. Airbnbs have become such a nuisance that some areas are banning them altogether to save their communities. I propose to the city of Laconia to decline this variance and consider adopting limited or restrictive, more restrictive policies for Airbnb-type rentals in our area. Preserve our private recreational residential community and leave the applicants of number seventeen's business of lodging accommodations to the many properly, properly zoned, properly licensed, property tax hotels and resorts in the area. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else from the public wish to speak for or against this application? Please come forward.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I submitted an email before the last meeting, but I'm not sure if you received it. So I'd like to read it if you don't mind, and then I do have some copies I can pass along to you.
And your name is?
Linda Farah, unit seven. Did you receive that? Would you mind if I?
Please read it.
Okay, thank you so much. We're writing in response to the notice of the hearing application, and I put the number down. Since we've been owners at Gatehouse, there've been short-term rentals at a few of the units. To our knowledge, unit seventeen has been occupied by a long-term renter for many years. Some of the concerns with short-term rentals are the close proximity of the units to each other and the number of folks who show up at some of the rentals. The living area at most of the units is very limited. When renters have some other friends and family members show up, there's an issue with parking, and sometimes other unit owners cannot get into their units. We've owned our unit for almost fourteen years, and although there have been some short-term rentals over the years, they've been fewer over the past few years, mostly due to the renter issues that owners have had to deal with. Like many of our neighbors, we try to use our place as much as possible to relax and enjoy the area and the many activities that are offered throughout the year. We're at a retirement age and look forward to when we can spend more time at our happy place. Granting the variance would be contrary to the public interest of many owners at Gatehouse. Because of the issues mentioned above, it can be difficult to resolve some of the renter issues via telephone. If the variance were granted, the spirit of the ordinance would not be observed because the board and the abudders have already had to deal with so many issues from the short-term renters. Granting the variance would not do substantial justice to the other owners at Gatehouse. According to Exhibit B, the State of New Hampshire Record of Organization, Gatehouse Colony Condominium Association Articles of Agreement, the board has certain powers, and I won't read the whole article, but the main piece of it is that relating thereto and describing the powers of corporations under the corporate name to do any, and any other things that, in the opinion of the Board of Directors, will promote the common benefit and enjoyment of the members of the association. Being an owner of a unit in an association entitles, sorry, entails requesting approval from the Board of Directors to do certain things, make certain changes, et cetera, and adhering to certain association rules and regulations. The owners of unit seventeen stated that if this variance is not granted, they may experience unnecessary hardship due to an overextension of their resources. Unfortunately, they may have to consider selling their unit and purchasing something that's not part of an association so that they can rent it for two days, two weeks, two months, and not have to adhere to any of the rules and regulations except their own. In conclusion, we do feel that the majority of owners at Gatehouse would support short-term renter, rentals. Do not feel, did I say that? I'm sorry. In conclusion, we do not feel that the majority of owners at Gatehouse would support short-term rentals after the unpleasant experiences that have occurred this past year. The responsibility of the Board of Directors is to promote the common benefit and enjoyment of all the owners, not just a few. Respectfully submitted, Linda Farah and Michael Wood, Gatehouse Colony, unit number seven. Do you, you have this?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public wish to speak for or against this application?
Hi, my name is Ron Leroux. I have unit two. Was originally a full-time renter, full-time for a few years back in the early nineties. The owner that I rented from decided to sell the unit. So I was in a position and said, why not buy it? Been there ever since. Myself and I think a couple of other units that are there, full-time. As a matter of fact, one of the units actually sent children to school, which I thought was against the rules. That's not here or there. This is about the environment. And again, I didn't put together a list or mail anything in. I felt I would come in support of not supporting this, this change because, speaking from my experience, being there full-time, not just, you know, coming up in the summer for vacations, I've seen it all. And there's lots more, you know, whether or not it's dogs. You know, we have rules that say you gotta have them on a leash. My wife is sixty years old, I have a husky. She walks him on a leash. Renters come up, they bring dogs, they're running around. She's older. I don't need her falling, you know, I don't need strange dogs running up. Owners are careful. They understand the rules, they implement them. I don't have any surprises. I think that, you know, these kinds of stories that you're hearing, as I said, I didn't write down anything formal, but these are all true, what they're, what they're bringing up. Short-termers just don't abide by those rules. And being there and seeing it and hearing about it and witnessing it certainly is disturbing, and it makes it very uncomfortable for the people who do own. You know, there, there are questions, obviously, that I can't present to this board, but I mean, myself, I have to wonder, you know, we all contribute to, you know, insurance on that common area. Well, it's, it's okay, I mean, you know, we have small families and we all take care of one another, but now I'm taking care of hundreds of other people that could possibly have accidents and have to cover their accidents on the property? That's, that's not the, the context of the way this place was set up or the way that it's operated. I, I guess that's all I have to say if, you know, I would prefer you do not allow this.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anybody else from the public wish to speak? Good evening.
My name is Chris McGala. My wife Lindsay and I purchased number six in Gatehouse Colony in February of twenty twenty-one. While we are new residents in the association, we didn't go by the Airbnb model that's been talked about tonight. Rather, we picked an association that we felt had a very strong family atmosphere. The single-family nature of it, the fact that the units are, yes, close together, but it doesn't feel like a hotel. It doesn't feel like you're staying two feet away from your neighbors that are constantly changing. It is that single-family atmosphere. Our son is eleven years old, loves to fish, loves to use the beach. We have a boat. But when we come over the summertime and find the association beach, which is just feet from our backyard, overcrowded, overrun with folks that disrespect the property, strewn with, you know, tipped-over fire pits, leftover chairs, trash, fishing gear that's left behind, hooks and line. It takes away from that family atmosphere. We picked it because it was a family atmosphere. It was a great place, it is a great place to live with families that we know that we're still learning to know, many of the people in the association. I would ask that you go vote against this variance to maintain that family atmosphere. I believe it is a mischaracterization in the attorney's presentation that this, that granting this variance will not take away from that family atmosphere. It absolutely will. I live next door to Kenny, close to Kevin, right across from Linda. I've gotten to know my neighbors over the last two years. The folks that cried out the beach, that don't allow access to the dock because they put their lawn chairs out there, blocking my access to the boat and to the ladder, I don't know them. They don't know me, and they don't respect. So I would ask that you agree against this variance. Thank you.
Good evening.
My name's Mark Eaton from unit four. And I'm against it because I wanna preserve the nature and the atmosphere that I've enjoyed for twenty years. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public wish to speak for or against this application? While y'all think?
Hi, Nancy Souza from unit twelve. I just wanted to add, I know I heard, I've heard a lot of things about strangers in the neighborhood, and, and I understand that, but on the flip side, you have to understand as being a new person there, everybody has people up, I, I don't, I don't know who's in all those units. Like, if they have friends up or extended family or guests, whatever. It's not my business, as long as they're not creating a problem. It's not my business to know who's in somebody's house and, and stay in there. So I could say I could feel unsafe by not knowing those people, but on the other side, I don't need to know everybody there. I, I enjoy the community atmosphere there. I know who my neighbors are, but if there's other people in somebody's home, I don't need to know, oh, that's, that's so-and-so, and they're related to them, and that, it's not my business.
Okay, thank you. While the rest of you think about it for a second, I'm gonna, got a couple of letters here to read into the records. I'm probably gonna butcher this name. I'll say it upfront. This one's from Acosta, Georgia, Lewis. To Georgia?
To Georgia.
Okay. Thank you. And they're the owner of unit one at the Gatehouse Colony Condominium Association, and they're writing this email to object to the application. And that's about the extent of what they're saying. They did attend the meeting last time, and they were unable to come this time. This one's from the Booths. We are the Booths. And we represent Gatehouse, unit number thirteen. We're sending this email to, to our opinion and approval of the request to do the short-term rental. I have another one from a Burley. And they oppose the seasonal housing and short-term rentals. There are plenty of rental properties. That's someone else that doesn't approve. And then there's the Russo's, Mr. Russo and his family. They begin to like the unit. Point out the exhibit C of the condominium resident reg states as follows. The unit shall be used for a private residential use by the owners, their family and guests, but not for business or professional use whatsoever. Owners shall neither make nor permit their g- Owners shall neither make nor permit their guests or invited to make any improper, offensive, unlawful use of the property compromising the condominium. In particular, no use shall be made of any unit which would become an annoyance or nuisance to other unit owners." This being the case, how could it be possible to ensure these rules are being abided by if the owner is not in the house or even on the property? It is no secret that the renters as a whole do not take care of the property as homeowners would. Current problems that have been experienced at Gatehouse with short-term renters are as follows. Excessive noise, disorderly conduct, abuse of others', owners' property, misuse of the commonspace, occupants exceeding legal limits and general lack of compliance to the association rules and regulations. As a community, we've worked hard over the years, many spending countless hours to make this desirable and safe place for our families, but how can this community remain safe for our children and grandchildren if a new group of strangers are permitted to come and go on a daily basis? We have no idea who these people are nor their intentions. Don't be fooled, short-term rentals in a residential association is a business. This is clearly stated and defined in the municipal regulations as short-term rentals. Reference to New Hampshire Law RSA twenty-one colon six dash eight. Short-term rentals come with all the problems that go along with having a business. Only in this case there is no one to oversee. The business is allowed for, allowing for the problems and safety concerns to go unnoticed by the owner and therefore unresolved. Thank you, Robert Russo. So that's all the letters that I'm aware of, available. And I'm gonna ask one more time. Anybody from the public wish to speak? Please come forward.
Good evening. My name's Cassandra Bro. My husband Don and I purchased Number Twenty-One in Gatehouse Community back in October of twenty nineteen. We've been here for a long time and we've heard a lot of the issues. I'm not gonna repeat everything, but I stand in solidarity with our neighbors in opposing this variance. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? You're gonna get another shot. Going two, three, four, five. Okay, there's no one, let the record indicate, no one else from the public wish to speak for or against this application. Therefore, I bring it back. The applicant?
Thank you. I'll try and keep it brief. So there's been a lot said here tonight, and I'm not sure the characterization of the applicants is, is accurate. They purchased in this community because their parents live in this community. They didn't purchase to do short-term rentals. Again, they're young, they have a family, they're trying to have a nice home here in New Hampshire that they can come to and enjoy. And in order to do that, they're looking to subsidize by doing some short-term rentals. So I just want to get the characterization there. Did they make some mistakes? Yes. Did they rent during Bike Week and found out that was a mistake? Yep, that was a huge mistake. They're not doing that again. They get it. There are some protections in place, put in by the city. They have to get a permit. They have to meet the qualifications to get the permit. There is a grievance provision there so that the people here, if they have any issues, can call the city and the city, you get too many complaints, they're gonna pull that permit. Permits have to be renewed every two years, so there's a stopgap there. There's something that exists that if things are not going the way they should, there are some redress for this, for the rest of the community. That was sort of characterization. I'm gonna move to the legal stuff. One of the letters that you read quoted part of the condominium documents, but not all of that. The condominium documents do not allow people to live in the property year-round. The fact that that is happening is in violation of condo documents. That's neither here nor there. I just don't think you get to pick and choose what sections you want to enforce in the condominium documents. You enforce them all or you don't enforce any of them. And I understand, again, since I am who I am and I sit on my own board, that the issues that the condominium association and the homeowners have are legal issues between them and is not really privy for this board. If the condominium association wants to ban leasing, then they should get together, they should have a meeting that is in compliance with the bylaws and they should ban the leasing. Because as they currently read, they are allowed to lease there as long as it's for a minimum of seven days. There are no other prohibitions about leasing. Additionally, past concerns should not be influenced the decision of this board. As I discussed, there's a permitting process for these complaints and they can be reviewed there. I note that in your May twenty twenty-two minutes, you were discussing this issue. It was noted that there were ninety short-term lodging permits were issued to date and they had had zero complaints. I don't know what's happened since then, but as of May in your minutes, those were the stats that we had. So this is some pretty good statistics. I think I have covered the gist of what I wanted to cover. Again, they're not Airbnb guys. They're there to do some short-term rentals, make some money that they can continue to be part of this, this group, which sounds like a great group. I don't think their intent certainly was to rent to poor renters and they're not gonna do it again. We've, we've discussed that, so. If the board sees fit that they would want to approve the request for the variance, the applicants are happy to go with the limitations that exist within the bodying of the ordinance, which is the fifteen separate rentals or a maximum of one hundred and twenty nights a year. Again, this is not something they're looking to do for a living. This is something they're just simply doing to offset so that they can continue to enjoy the residence such as it is. Are there any questions for me or the applicants that we haven't addressed?
Any questions from the board to the applicant? There being none?
Thank you very much. I appreciate your time and consideration.
So that'll be your, I'm gonna ask you one more question is, do you have any closing comments?
I think that people deserve a second chance. I think that they had some bad renters there. As I'd mentioned, there are, there's a system in place now to lay out ground rules, especially as a few have mentioned here and we've got the shirts. We are in New Hampshire here. This is the live free or die state. To take somebody's right of way to be able to lease their property moves you into a constitutional issue. People should be able to use, to lease their properties. And again, if the condo association wants to take it upon themselves to change that, then they have a procedure to do that and they, they haven't done it to date. So as it stands, everyone is free to lease there up to seven days.
Okay.
So thank you.
Just to let you know, one item, and all references to anything that is being asked for in here that pertain to the condominium documents, we cannot
Understood. Certainly acknowledged. That's what I said to you. That's a legal matter between
That's a civil matter between the owners and the homeowners association or condo or whatever body that is.
Understood.
They would rectify that and there is no relief on any of those items from the board for that. So I just wanted to let everybody know that because part of the stuff in here was pertaining to issues with the condominium board. So I just wanted to make that clear that we
So my, in, in putting the information about the condominium goes to the heart of why we need a variance. And that was the only reason that, because of the unique nature of the inability to live in that property year-round moves them into a different category, which is a seasonal use. That's the only reason that I included that information in there. Thank you.
With that, I'm gonna close it to the public and bring it to the board for discussion. So basically what we're looking for is to do a variance to approve a short-term rental where the actual codes that are written to cover the short-term rentals are not being utilized.
Explain that again.
I'm sorry.
Explain that again.
Well, say it, say it a different way. To utilize a short-term rental for these zones, one must use the short-term rental codes or ordinance which are two thirty-five dash forty-one, which sets up which zones and stuff have the ability to have short-term rentals. Some are given, two zones I do believe have been given the right, right out. All they have to do is still apply for a permit and follow the permitting processes. And then a half a dozen other zones may apply for a special exception based on the fact of them meeting the condition set forth in two thirty-five dash seven zero. Okay. So when you're looking at the variance, one has to look at how that applies to them not being required to meet two thirty-five dash forty-one and two thirty-five dash seventy. Okay. They're, and then that's how we apply the conditions of the variance as it applies to those two ordinances and whatnot. Yes.
Can I get some clarification as to what zone Gatehouse Colony is actually in?
RS.
RS. Which does give them the, the ability to request a special exception and meet the criteria of two thirty-five dash seven.
But they're not asking for a special exception.
I understand. They're asking for a variance to
To oversee that.
To oversee, to overstep that.
To overstep that.
So when you apply in that criteria, it is to those two ordinances. Okay? And that's how we, it should be discussed, is how it's based upon those. Okay. The five criteria stand out, so as we asked each of these questions, then we should see how that works within the confines of anything else. For instance, a house says, I want a fourteen hundred square foot house and put it on a fourteen square, hundred square foot lot. And I want a variance to overlook all the codes required that stop me from doing that. Okay, that's feasible. It's allowable to ask for a variance to not have to have the green space, not have to have the front setback, side setback or any setbacks whatsoever. They, they can ask for whatever they wish. Okay? Doesn't mean it makes all the criteria. Or it does. That's what the board is here to determine. If those five portions of the variance meet